Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is called to order at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong.
Dr. Alhessen.
Present.
Mrs. Garza.
Present.
Ms. Stewart.
Present.
Mr. Crichfield.
Present. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed-session agenda items, and at this time, the Board will adjourn to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Good evening, everybody. We will now reconvene to open session at 6:01 PM to resume the regular order of business. Board Clerk Meyer Garza will provide an update on closed-session topics.
Thank you, President Crichfield. The topics discussed in closed session were student matters, anticipated litigation, labor negotiations. The Board took action in closed session to approve Student Expulsion Case 24-17-0008. And also to approve, the Board approved settlements on two pending lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Replacement pages for items 13.3, 13.11, 13.14, and 13.22 are on the back table over there. Tonight, we do have requests addressing agenda and non-agenda items. First, while meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board on each agenda item or non-agenda item, and the Board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 21 minutes as per Board bylaw 9322.2. May I have Gina Holcomb to the podium? Welcome.
Good evening. I am here as a proud and happy retiree. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to be here tonight and say thank you for the opportunity to teach for 39 years in this district. Yes, it is, I know. Ooh, the crowd response was great. I'd also like to say thank you so much for also your consideration of replacing me. Thirty-nine years of teaching and fighting for a program. Every year, 16 principals. I lost count of how many superintendents, but 16 principals and different boards coming before you, fighting for buses, funding, hiring the next person. You got a two-for-for me for 39 years. I teach vocal and instrumental. I'm hard to replace, not tooting my own horn. But you need somebody who is highly qualified. You need a unicorn. You need somebody who can do both at the middle school level. You've all said that this is an important program. Now you have to take action. The numbers are there at Mayfair, I promise you. The numbers are there. Every time in history, they've waited till the last minute to replace that middle school teacher. Don't wait. Honor your teachers by honoring their work ethic, by giving them the program. Thirty-nine years of a winning program, of a top-notch. Of course, you have to give these kids a place to go. I gave up about 80% of my lunches for those middle school kids. They needed a place to go. They deserve their own teacher. I appreciate the work you do. You may or may not know my aunt and uncle served on this board. They did important work. You have a thankless job, all of you, I know. Thank you for the things you do. Please, please, act quickly. I know you're waiting for July 1st. Please act quickly and post the position and honor our kids and honor our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Thank you, and thank you for your 39 years, too. Madam Annalene Revicksky. Revick, Revicksky. Revicksky, welcome.
Good evening, members of the BUSD School Board Cabinet and Families. My name is Annalene Revicksky, and I'm a parent of an incoming eighth grader who is passionate about choir and music. I am here today to express my concern about the lack of a dedicated music school teacher at Mayfair. Music education is essential for a well-rounded education. Studies show that music programs enhance academic achievement, cognitive abilities, and social skills. Music fosters creativity, discipline, teamwork, and are crucial, and all crucial for our children's development. Currently, Mayfair has not hired a middle school music teacher to teach band and choir, and I'm anxious that the district will wait until the last minute to fill this vacancy. With the implementation of Prop 288 programs, finding competent and reliable music teachers will be more challenging. The middle and high school music programs of Mayfair are equally demanding, and the retirement of Ms. Holcomb has left an imbalanced workload for Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Phillips. I urge the Board to prioritize resolving this issue. As a parent, I have seen positive impact music has had for my child. Choir has been a source of joy and motivation for my daughter since fifth grade, provided her with a sense of belonging, inspiration, and opportunities to develop her talents, gain confidence, and form meaningful connections with her peers. Without a qualified music teacher, our children are being deprived of these opportunities. This is not, this doesn't only affect their personal growth, but also diminishes our school's commitment to providing a comprehensive education. Our talented and passionate students need proper guidance and instruction to thrive. I urge the School Board to prioritize hiring a middle school teacher for Mayfair as soon as possible. Our students deserve access to high-quality music education that will enrich academic experience and prepare them for future successes. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I appreciate everything that you do for our students and families. Good evening.
Thank you. Up next, Juliana Revicksky. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the BUSD School Board, staff, and school community. My name is Juliana Revicksky, and I'm an incoming eighth grader at Mayfair Middle and High School. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I am here to express my concern and anxiety about the fact that our school has not yet hired a middle school music teacher to replace Mrs. Jennifer Campbell, who is assuming Ms. Gina Holcomb's teaching position, who has just retired. It would be so challenging for Mrs. Campbell to teach and run both middle school and high school vocal programs, because these are two different programs that are equally demanding to run. One program will suffer for sure, and it won't be fair for the students, family, and Mrs. Campbell herself. And there's the middle school band program, they will suffer too. So a middle school music teacher who is capable of teaching and running both middle school vocal and band programs needs to be hired immediately. I understand that finding a qualified music teacher can be challenging, but I urge the Board to make this a priority and not wait for August, and to just give us substitute teachers who may not have the proper music teaching credentials to teach it. The value of a strong music program goes beyond just learning how to sing or play an instrument. It fosters a love of learning, builds confidence, and creates a well-rounded education. Without a permanent music teacher, many of us are worried that we won't have these opportunities next year. We fear that the music program will be cut or diminished, and that future students won't have the same chance to explore their musical talents and interests. Music education has been a significant part of my school experience since I was in elementary school, when I was a member of BUSD's Music Ensemble and Elementary Singers with Mr. Ron Williams. It helped me develop important skills like creativity, discipline, and teamwork. For me, music is just not an extracurricular activity. It's a lifeline, a source of joy, and a way to cope with stress and challenges. Choir or band is more than just a class. It's a way for these students to express themselves, find their passion, and build a sense of community. These are wonderful experiences that I believe every student should have the opportunity to enjoy. These are not just important for school, but for life. In conclusion, I respectfully ask that the School Board take immediate action to hire a new music teacher for our school. Let's ensure that all students, including future generations, have access to the benefits and joy of music education. Thank you for listening to my concerns and for your dedication to our school and its students.
Thank you very much. Catherine Gates.
Hello, my name is Catherine Gates. I will be a member of the junior band in Advanced Chorus this coming school year. Chorus and band were a great opportunity for me to learn new skills, make friends, and have fun. In addition, these classes helped me gain confidence and courage. I would have never imagined myself singing onstage or playing a solo in front of a large crowd until I joined both of these wonderful programs. Without these electives, I wouldn't have the courage to speak here today. Band and chorus were classes that I looked forward to every day. In choir, I learned how to sightseeing, clap and count rhythms, tune with my peers, and harmonize with my class. In band, I learned advanced techniques on how to play my clarinet, proper breathing strategies, acceptable posture, tone management, sight-reading skills, and how to tap my foot and keep tempo. Thanks to these programs, I have become a better musician. The middle school music classes prepare the students for the high school music classes. Thus, these programs are dependent on each other. Not properly funding the middle school program will negatively impact the high school music program as well. I came to the School Board meeting tonight because I want to make sure the district continues to invest in these classes. Hiring an additional music teacher is necessary to continue a high-quality music program and support the middle and high school music department. It is important to continue to fund quality visual arts programs, because music provides a creative outlet for all students to express themselves. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. May I have Nicole Gates. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, School Board and Cabinet members. My name is Nicole Gates. My child is a student at Mayfair Middle School. I am writing to you because I am concerned with the music program at my child's school. At the end of the school year, my daughter's music teacher, Mrs. Holcomb, retired from the district. From my understanding, there are no, there has been no new decision on whether the district is going to hire a new music teacher. Therefore, the music program could go from three teachers to two. That is a reduction of 33% for the music department. I am concerned, because each teacher taught six classes for a combined total of 18 classes. With the retirement of Mrs. Holcomb, who will be teaching her classes? What are the plans for those classes, and more importantly, how will this affect our students and teachers? Will Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Phillips have crowded classrooms that will hinder learning? Will a variety of music classes no longer be offered, because we do not have enough teachers? Will there be substitute teachers in these classes if the district decides that an additional teacher is needed at the last minute? There are many unknowns that make me worry about my daughter's learning experience in the music program. I do not want my child in a music program with a substitute teacher who may not have a music background. I want her to have the best educational experience possible with a qualified teacher that is invested in our school community. I want the district to communicate with parents what the plans are for the music program. I want the district to continually invest in these programs. The music program has been impactful to my child and many others at Mayfair. Our music teachers are enthusiastic, committed individuals who care about quality music programs and the experience at Mayfair. I do not want Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Phillips to have additional classes and extracurricular music responsibilities added to their already full slate. I want the district to have a plan for the music program and to communicate this plan to the families. I want the district to be proactive, not reactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. May I have Sarah LaFever.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Sarah LaFever. I'm here as an alumni of Bellflower High School, Washington Elementary, and I currently have two children going into fifth grade at Washington Elementary. I'd like to speak on the topic of teacher retention. We're kind of along these same lines here. While I understand that we need to have flexibility as a district so that the district can adapt to changing enrollment and changes in funding, it is also important that the district does what it can to retain good teachers. A school is only as good as its teachers. No amount of technology and supplemental resources will come close to the impact that one good teacher can have on students. With teachers potentially needing to wait until just before the start of the next school year to know if they'll have a full-time job to come back to, many will have no choice but to seek employment elsewhere. They have families to support, and they need medical insurance. The teachers who are most likely to go out and get hired elsewhere are often going to be the best ones. They're the ones with marketable and obvious skills. They are the ones with high levels of motivation, who aren't content to just sit and hope that they are rehired the next year. Meanwhile, less motivated and less marketable teachers will be the ones who stay. I know the district needs flexibility, but they need to balance that with making this a good place for teachers to want to stay, for good teachers to want to stay. No one likes their job to be in limbo's for week, weeks, year after year, and if good teachers can find more stable positions, they will. Currently, it seems a large number of our teachers are deemed temporary. Maybe that number could be decreased, or maybe they're, maybe they could know the status before the end of each school year. I don't know what the answer is. Maybe there's another answer. But I just know the system that we have right now is not great for teacher morale, and it's, and the constant change in faculty at schools is bad for community cohesion and continuity for our students. My daughter has already experienced the results of this practice once, when she spent the first two months of third grade with a substitute. And I don't want any of our kids to have to go through that again, because it actually puts them behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaFever.
Ms. Azaveto, can we follow up on just how many temporary teachers we do have?
Yes, I can get that information for you.
Thank you.
May I have Sue Burhow. Sue Burhow? Oh, sorry. Welcome.
Good evening, President Crichfield, members of the Board, Administration. I would like to introduce myself for those who don't know me. My name is Sue Burhow. I'm the acting chairperson of the Bellflower Unified School District Personnel Commission. I have a long, over 60-year relationship with the Bellflower Unified School District. I've been resident at Bellflower since 1962, except for the three years I spent in the United States Army after I graduated from Bellflower High School in 1966. My son graduated from Bellflower High School in 1995, and my daughter in 1998, after attending Ramona Elementary. My grandson also attended Ramona Elementary for seven years before moving to Orange County. I have previously been an active member of the Ramona Elementary PTA, PTSA, and the Bellflower High School PTSA, having served as president of both. I am the proud recipient of the Golden Oak Service Award from the California State PTA. And I've also served as a member of the Citizens Task Force, and I was a team mom for my son's Little League team. I retired from the Bellflower Unified School District, and I'm a strong supporter of CSCE Chapter 32, having served as president prior to my retirement. I am currently the appointee of the CSCE Chapter 32 as their representative on the Personnel Commission since 2017. I've worked collaboratively with several prior administrations in my capacity as PTSA president and Chapter 32 president, as well as my position on the Personnel Commission, and I hope to continue to work together for the benefit of the approximately 570 classified employees of the Bellflower School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burhow. Mrs. Stacy Canon. Welcome.
Of course, right when I come up here, something's in my eye. Anyway, thank you for your time. I'd like to speak in response to Agenda Item 11.1, Appointment of the Personnel Commissioner at the May 23rd School Board Meeting. So I'd like to provide additional context and some clarification. But before I continue, I want to make it perfectly clear that I understand by governance and policy that the Board can decide to reappoint, conduct interviews, and/or to appoint another commissioner at their will. Board Member Garza responded as such when Member Armstrong questioned the current agenda item, since she recalled seeing a January agenda item for the reappointment of the serving Personnel Commission, which was myself. In reviewing the transcript meeting, Member Crichfield stated that this originally came up in August of last year, somewhere around that time in the September on the consent agenda to appoint the board-appointed commissioner, and that he tabled the matter, because he said he did not know who the appointee was. Board Member Crichfield, being new, was not part of the interview process conducted in 2021 with then-board members Ramirez, Downing, Garza, Armstrong, and Dr. Alhessen. Board Member Crichfield tabled the matter in compliance with the, because Board Member tabled the matter in compliance with the Brown Act, the Board as a body did not have the opportunity and could address the reappointment, thus possibly addressing Mr. Crichfield's questions, thus negating the necessity to apply for something I was already appointed to and had already been serving in that capacity. Board Member Armstrong mentioned this and said that she remembers seeing something in January, and that it was probably pulled at that time. So again, we didn't have the opportunity to address any questions that Mr. Crichfield may have had. Per Education Code 452545G, the 90-day clock was ticking, and since three of the current Board Members were part of the original interview process, I took the initiative and reached out to Board Member Crichfield in January on LinkedIn, since he had not contacted me. We started a conversation. He said he would love to chat with me. I mentioned checking my calendar for a few dates. I proposed a meeting date, to which you did not respond. In this age where we are promoting everyone being valued, seen, and heard, I am choosing to speak today because I am dismayed that I seem to be the most well-known, unknown person who served BUSD for three years in the capacity of Personnel Commissioner and recently as the chairperson. Even though you have no obligation to, please, I'm asking for a little bit more minutes, I see the clock, but I'm trying to finish up really quickly, but even though you have no obligation to, by requirements by law, but as a incumbent, I would have respected at least that for my service, that you could at least, one, acknowledge my meeting request, two, respectfully decline to meet with me, two, make time to get to know me, and if anyone from the superintendent's office would have just extended professional courtesy and shared the Board's intention. Lastly, just a few more grace, so please, just give me a little grace. I want to point out that my connections in this community, I've worked for Bellflower Unified School District for 10 years.
Can we extend the time for one minute? Is that okay? Is one minute okay?
Just one minute, it'd be perfect.
Great.
I've worked for Bellflower Unified School District for 10 years, and I know many people in this room. I've worked under three superintendents. I've lived in this county, this city for 30 years. I've worked at Laco. I am currently working in public sector where I am responsible for over $300 million of expenditures. I'm no stranger to contract code, ed code, labor code, government code, business and professional code, and a code of regulations. And here's my final words. I would just like to leave this for consideration, taking nothing away from the new appointee. I don't wish anybody any will intend, but I'm just saying, based upon the memo, because you mentioned during the meeting that your comfort level, that based upon the fact that there was a memo, you were comfortable with pointing someone based on the memo. So my concern is that the Board has a responsibility to look at matters based upon the benefit of the community, not just the benefit of Mr. Crichfield. And this is a way that Board Members can maintain the balance of powers and not have the appearance of patronate, excuse me, patronate appointments. It's been my pleasure serving you all, but it's shameful that no one reached out to me and even to acknowledge me, even to reiterate that me being seen, valued, and heard, and at least to say thank you for your three years of service. It's been my pleasure to serve you, but I feel like I've been done a disservice, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And appreciate the work.
Ms. Stewart?
Just as a clarifying question, you were not the superintendent when this came about, correct? We had a previous superintendent when all of this happened?
She was appointed during the time of her previous superintendent? That's correct.
But in January, when this came back up on our agenda, you were not our interim superintendent at the time, correct?
I didn't start this position until February.
Thank you.
But you were superintendent when the notification went out for that commissioned
I was here when you had that on your board meeting, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alhessen. And back to the stage, Ms. Sue Burhow.
Hello again. Let's see if I get the right one here. I have a lot to say. On June 18 of this year, the Personnel Commission held a special meeting. At that meeting, two Board Members attended and addressed the Commission regarding how long it had taken for the board appointee commissioner to be brought on board. I'm here to clarify misinformation regarding comments made by Mr. Crichfield at the Personnel Commission meeting, and inform Ms. Stewart, as well as the rest of the Board, that their appointed member has not been processed, because he informed our personnel assistant via email that he was on vacation and would be returning on June 18, 2024. The first contact was on June 5th, when our personnel assistant contacted him using his cell number provided. There was no response, so a message was left regarding scheduling appointment to complete paperwork. On June 6, another call was made, this time to both his cellphone number and his home number. Messages were left again. He returned the call at 5:48 PM after work hours. On June 7, an email was received from Mr., I believe it's Wiley, stating that he was on vacation and would return on June 18. He stated reception was spotty. Our personnel assistant responded to his email, letting him know to contact her upon his return. At the Personnel Commission meeting, Mr. Crichfield stated that Mr. Wiley was on vacation for only four days. However, based on Mr. Wiley's communication with our personnel assistant, this was not the case. On June 17, a voicemail was received from Mr. Wiley that he was back. An email was sent in response, asking him if he was available on June 18. He stated he was not. Our personnel assistant then spoke with him on the phone. He asked to come in on June 19. As you know, June 19 was a holiday. An appointment was scheduled for Monday, June 24, based on availability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you again, Ms. Burhow. All right. Do we have any corrections to this evening's agenda?
No corrections this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to call interim CEO of CalApps, Ms. Arlene Whitney, to the podium, and she will lead us in the flag salute. Thank you, Ms. Whitney.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. And now, my favorite time, it is time for recognitions. Ms. Azaveto, would you please assist us with our recognitions?
Yes, this evening, we are very proud to recognize our retirees, and I would like to ask the Board to come down in front of the dais while Mrs. Carter facilitates the This evening, the Board of Education would like to recognize those individuals who have provided service to Bellflower Unified School District students in and outside of the classroom. As I call your name, please join us up front and remain for a picture. Myrna DeGostino provided 18 years of service to BUSD. Myrna has, was hired in 2006 as a clerical assistant to at Frankie Woodruff Elementary and has been with Woodruff Elementary for 18 years of her career here in BUSD. She has been the backbone of their school and is a warm face that students and parents see on a daily basis. She created a pleasant and welcoming environment in the front office with her friendly greetings of all students and parents. Myrna was accurate and efficient in all of her duties. The Frankie Woodruff staff, students, and families are grateful for all of Myrna's consistency and loyalty to their school. She played a big role in the magic that happens and will be greatly missed. Everyone at Woodruff wishes you a happy retirement. Congratulations, Myrna. Is there anyone you'd like to recognize in the audience? Yes, you. Oh, wonderful. Thank you for your service. Next, we'd like to recognize Kim Coleman for providing 18 and a half years of service Ms. Coleman has made significant contributions in both the Resource Specialist Program and the Special the Special Day Class. In the RSP program, she has co-taught English and math, and while in the SDC, she has taught world history, science, and math. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom, serving as the advisor for the California Junior Scholarship Federation and the Buck Scholars, as well as the co-advisor for Cha Cha Kids. Her commitment to Bellflower's school community is unwavering. She has been an active member of the PTSA, always among the first to volunteer, particularly for selling concessions at football games. This past year, she stepped up to serve as the PTSA president, demonstrating her leadership and passion for Bellflower High School. We are grateful for her active participation in enhancing the educational experience for all of our students. Congratulations, Ms. Coleman. Did you want to recognize anyone? Next, we'd like to recognize Colleen Brady for providing 23 years of service to BUSD. Colleen was hired in 1999 as a noon duty assistant for the district. In 2001, she became a special education instructional assistant. Colleen has served at various sites such as Mayfair High School, Stephen Foster Elementary, and most recently at the ATC, where she remained until she retired this June 2024. You would also often see her working various sporting events at Mayfair or working extra hours in the classroom. Colleen worked very well with students, both individually and in group settings, and understood their needs. She would go beyond what was necessary in her job, was extremely patient, caring, and reliable. She was described as superb in her work and an asset to the special education program. Thank you, and congratulations, Colleen. And is there anyone you'd like to recognize? Very well, awesome. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Melvin Crowe for providing 25 years of service at BUSD. Melvin was hired in 1999 as a custodian and served at several sites, doing everything he could to keep them in good shape. He was regarded as always willing to go out of his way to lend a hand. Two great examples of Mel providing assistance are that he became part of the discipline program at Baxter Elementary School by being a mentor for students who were fulfilling community service hours. And the second example is that he became part of the site PBIS team and provided valuable insight. In 2016, Melvin became a grounds maintenance worker, and in 2017, he began working as the plumber HVAC mechanic until he retired in March of 2024. Mel was an outstanding and dedicated employee. He was respected by all who knew him and will be missed. Is there anyone you would like to recognize?
I would like to recognize Dan Buffington.
Okay, good.
Dan Buffington, he gave me hard interviews when I first got an A. But I learned to dance, you know, it's got, the best thing to do is dig into what you know, and all that. And then I recognize everybody in here. I fix all airheads.
Well, thank you.
That's why most people know me, but I really gonna miss my Bellflower, including the family.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize Cliff Higgins, providing 25 years of service at BUSD. Cliff Higgins began his education career at Bellflower Unified School District as a teacher at Bellflower Middle High School in 1999. He also held the position of varsity boys' basketball coach and activities director at Bellflower Middle High. In 2000, he transitioned to an administrative position as an assistant principal at Bellflower High. He later became an assistant principal at Mayfair Middle High School, summer school principal, and has been the leader and principal at Somerset Continuation High School since 2020. Cliff is a big sports fan, and throughout his various roles with Bellflower Unified, you could always find him on the sidelines, behind the bench, or in the stands of BUSD Athletics, cheering on our students. He also enjoys playing volleyball with his Somerset students. Cliff has been a standard of excellence, equity, and professionalism throughout his career with BUSD and will be missed. Cliff is a man of faith and can often be found teaching Sunday School for young kids, as well as leading Bible study sessions. Cliff is looking forward to increased time with his wife and two daughters and many travels during retirements. Would you like to recognize anyone?
Yes, first and foremost, I'd like to thank God for putting us in this position. And also thank the water education, both the current board education and the previous board, all of the superintendents that are, again, both current and past superintendents, all of the wonderful colleagues in the profession here at Bellflower District. I could go on and on. Teachers, classified staff, you know, they've just been great. And I'm gonna miss the day-to-day interaction, but I will say though that Bellflower is a family to me, and I will definitely retain this position. So thank you again very much.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Higgins. Next, we'd like to recognize Monica Bosk, providing 26 years of service to BUSD. Monica was hired in 1998 as a stock clerk for the district. She also served as a warehouse worker, delivery driver, and then became the district warehouse supervisor in 2013. Monica will be retiring at the end of this month. She is a longstanding fixture of BUSD who has always given more than expected for our district. She is an extremely dedicated employee and the definition of work integrity. Her supervisor, Debbie, recalls the one time she called in sick in the last five years, thinking, OMG, what must be wrong? On a personal note, she has a wonderful sense of humor and makes everyone around her laugh. She has always been very family-oriented and tries to spend as much time as possible with her children and grandchildren. Aside from that, she is a great baker and is always working on some sort of craft. Her efforts and hard work here have not gone unnoticed. She will deeply be missed. Congratulations, Monica. Would you like to recognize anyone?
I would like to thank all my recognized colleagues and family. No woman has ever worked in a house that I would have led.
That's wonderful. Thank you for your service. Next, we're recognizing Narice Altier, providing 27 years of service to BUSD. Ms. Altier began her teaching career 27 years ago, teaching kindergarten. She loves teaching kindergarten because she is able to see her students grow so much in a short period of time. She sees their love for school, and it is exciting for her to see them learn things like how to properly hold a pencil to write a complete sentence. Ms. Altier gives students an incredible start to their educational journey. She is a true kindergarten teacher who always puts students first. Her 27 years of kinder experience, knowledge, and passion are what makes her students love coming to school. During her retirement, she plans on completing home improvement projects, painting pieces of art, and exploring genealogy. She makes learning fun with lots of art and movement around the room. Her students love attending school and giving big hugs. Congratulations, Narice. Do you want to recognize anyone? No, thank you for your service. Next, we'd like to recognize Dave Bybee, providing 28 years of service to BUSD. Dave Bybee, a cherished educator and leader, is celebrating his well-earned retirement after an illustrious career spanning nearly three decades. Dave began his journey at Thomas Jefferson during the 1996-97 school year, dedicating the next 14 years to teaching sixth and second grade students. His passion for education and commitment to his students were evident in his engaging and thoughtful teaching style. In search of new challenges, Dave transferred to Mayfair, where he made a significant impact as a social science teacher. He excelled in teaching psychology and advanced placement psychology, inspiring countless students with his deep knowledge and enthusiasm for the subject. Beyond the classroom, Dave's leadership shone brightly as he served as the BTA president, advocating tirelessly for his colleagues and contributing to the betterment of the educational community. He also served as Social Science Department Chair and was a member of the Instructional Leadership Team at Mayfair. Dave's retirement marks the end of a remarkable chapter in education, but his legacy will continue to inspire students and educators alike. His dedication, passion, and leadership have left an indelible mark on all who had the privilege to learn from and work with him. Would you like to recognize anyone?
Yes, my wife, Tricia.
Wonderful.
My son, Matthew, and my daughter, and my nephew, and my two granddaughters, Beth.
Next, we would like to recognize Viancino, or Vina, Caligari, providing 31 years of service to BUSD. Ms. Caligari has been in the field of early childhood education for 31 years. She has given her heart to teaching, and her dedication has left a lasting mark on those she has served. Her guidance and support has helped shape young minds and build strong foundations for their futures. As Ms. Caligari embarks on this new chapter, we wish her endless joy, relaxation, and fulfillment. Is there anyone you'd like to recognize?
Yes, my mom. And my amazing assistant, Ms. Martine, and her family.
That's wonderful, and thank you for your service. Next, we'd like to recognize Colleen Nielsen for providing 35 years of service to BUSD. Ms. Nielsen began her teaching career at Ramona Elementary in 1989 and has always been a Ramona Ram. She genuinely invests in the relationship she has with students and colleagues alike. She is a quiet soul who always has kind words to say. She loves it when former students come to visit her and say hello. One of her favorite days of the year is Legacy Day, when the former students come to visit Ramona and she gets to see how much they have grown up. She works hard on proactive circles and building community in her classroom. When she retires, Ms. Nielsen's plans to focus on her health, work out more, and volunteer at her church and at Ramona. She looks forward to attending the Ramona PTA events and staying in touch with the family atmosphere that she loves at Ramona. Congratulations, Colleen. Is there anyone you'd like to recognize?
I'd like to thank all my former assistants, and all of the family that I've been with.
Thank you for your service, Colleen. Next, we'd like to recognize Dan Buffington, providing 38 years of service to BUSD. Dan was hired in 1985 as a senior maintenance worker. He also served in other positions such as the plumbing, heating, boiler mechanic, lead plumbing, vent refrigeration tech, and project manager, to name a few. Dan retired in September of 2023 as the Director of Facilities Maintenance Operations and Transportation. He was a key player in the maintenance department and the district with his overall knowledge of all the various trades. His attention to the job and details were excellent. Mr. Buffington would demonstrate his ability to go far and beyond his regular duties time after time. His service and dedication to the district was one of unlimited time and care that has left decades of improvements that will continue to be enjoyed by students in the years to come. The last project was our amazing steam building. Additionally, Mr. Buffington was a product of BUSD. You would often hear him say how he enjoyed giving back to his community. We thank him for his dedication and loyalty to the district. We wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Would you like to recognize someone? Wonderful.
44 years.
Thank you for your service, Dan. And finally, we would love to recognize Gina Holcomb, providing 39 years of service to Gina Holcomb spent 39 remarkable years at Mayfair, beginning her journey with the monsoons in 1985. She has led the vocal group at Mayfair for her entire career, earning the admiration and respect of both teachers and staff who view her as a valuable mentor and colleague. Gina's unwavering passion and dedication to her job have been evident throughout the years, contributing significantly to the school's vibrant community. Her commitment has brought countless magical performances to the community, showcasing the incredible talent of her students. Reflecting on her impact, one of her colleagues remarked, "We are slowly losing all the legends, and it has been my pleasure to have shared the same department for so many years. I appreciate you and all your hard work throughout the years. You will be a hard one to replace. You went the distance, a tough thing to do these days." As Gina Holcomb embarks on her well-deserved retirement, the Mayfair community celebrates her legacy and the profound influence she has had on generations of students and colleagues. Is there anyone you'd like to recognize after the picture show?
I would, all my amazing colleagues and friends at Mayfair, very, very proud of them. And thank you, Mel, for giving my ace. I thought Mel was the man.
You're welcome. Thank you for your service, Ms. Holcomb. Our retirees for the 2023-2024 combined have dedicated 837 years of service to our district. The board thanks each of you for your dedication and your efforts in helping us build futures. Congratulations again to everyone.
All right, at this time, first of all, thank each and every one of you. That really is my favorite part of these board meetings, and I appreciate all of you and just as my colleagues on the board do. And with that being said, we'll take a 10-minute break so we could chat. Dan could take some more photos and cookies and snacks. We will return at approximately 7 o'clock for open session. Welcome back, everyone. We will now reconvene to open session at 7:05. And I apologize, we did miss one card. Ms. Burhow has one more card.
I do, thank you.
So we will go back to public comment before we proceed with the rest of the evening's
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My, I have a few questions regarding the item, approval of deputy superintendent contract. It says that the contract was signed on May 24. It says that he would be responsible for the duties outlined in the job description for the position of deputy superintendent. Where was that job description posted? I couldn't find it. I didn't know where that was.
So perhaps staff can follow up. We wouldn't answer the questions here from the dais, but staff can follow up with any answers that you're looking for.
It also, if this is correct, it says the agreement was approved by the Board of Trustees June 3. Was there a meeting on June 3? Because that was a Monday.
So again, I wouldn't want to check and give you the wrong information, but any questions can be followed up, and staff will get back to you via email, if that's okay, Ms. Azaveto?
Yes, I can follow up.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is, if that's true, I went back, clear back into January, I I saw there were no, nothing on the agenda anywhere about appointing or hiring a deputy superintendent. I didn't see there was any public discussion on this, the need for a deputy superintendent, where the money was budgeting from, where the money's coming from. It's a significant amount of money, $255,000 plus stipends and everything. We have a declining enrollment. I don't understand why we need a deputy superintendent in a district that we have half the enrollment that we had 10 years ago. We have a superintendent that we just, an acting superintendent. So I'm just not really sure why we need another deputy superintendent to the tune of, between the two of them, over $500,000 a year for a district that has such a small enrollment, you know, when we have such a declining enrollment and anticipated a declining enrollment. And so that's kind of where I'm concerned about the transparency on this whole thing. If I'm missing it, I would like to know, but I did not see any agenda items. I did not see any public discussion. I did not see it posted anywhere, and I went all the way back to January, February. And I just talk about transparency, I'm not seeing it. And I just don't know how we can approve a contract when we don't even know who signed it, who approved it, how it came to be. And that's my concern. I'm not saying we don't need one, I'm just saying that in the interest of transparency, the district, we should know, as the people in this district and the owners and the concerned people in this district, we should know where our money's going.
Thank you, Ms. Burrhow. And I will respond to what, the contract's actually on the agenda for tonight.
Right.
Right.
To sign it, to approve it.
Yes, ma'am. And any of the other questions, because I want to make sure your dates are right and they reconcile. Staff will get back to you with all those answers.
So you're going to approve a contract that nobody knows anything about?
Thank you, Ms. Burrhow. I appreciate it.
That's what you're saying.
Tonight, interim CEO of the CalAps program, Ms. Arlene Whitney, come on back to the podium. She'll be giving the inspirational message and share the highlights of this month's boardroom bulletin board. Welcome again.
Good evening. Good evening, President Critchfield, members of the board, cabinet members, and guests. My name is Arlene Whitney, and I am proud to serve as the interim CEO for CalAps, and it is an honor to be here this evening to present the CalAps Bulletin Board Display that embodies our daily journey of inspiration, ambition, and unwavering commitment to our students. Our bulletin board, themed "Mirror, Mirror on the Wall, There Is a Career for Us All", is not just a collection of pictures and words, it's a reflection of our commitment to our students, our belief in their potential, and our dedication to their future. This bulletin board serves as a mirror reflecting the diverse career opportunities that await our students. From urban farming to early childhood education, from automotive technology to aviation, from product innovation and design or makerspace to firefighting, law enforcement, and health occupations, the board showcases the wide array of career technical education courses that we offer. But these mirrors do more than just reflect the present, it helps our students envision their future. It shows them that no matter their interests or passions, there is a career path for them. It encourages them to see themselves in these roles, to imagine the possibilities, and to strive towards those goals. As we stand before any of these mirrors, let's not just see the careers of today, but also the leaders of tomorrow. Let us see our students not just as they are, but as they could be, and let us continue to provide them with the education, the opportunities, and the support they need to turn these reflections into reality. Thank you for your time and your continued support of CalAps and our mission to develop and provide quality CTE for our students to ensure they become successful, contributing college and career-ready members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney, and all the great work that you do over at CalAps.
Thank you.
It is now time for BTA, CSEA, and PTA communications. BTA does not have a report tonight, but can CSEA Representative Mr. Anthony Ramirez come on down to the podium? Welcome, Anthony.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Board President, Board President Critchfield, board members, Superintendent Azaveto, cabinet guests, and I would have said retirees, but I think they're all out there having cake and cookies. We, CSEA, I am actually a member of CSEA, the California School Employees Association. I've also been a Bellflower employee for over 31 years, but I'm here today as a CSEA Bellflower Chapter 32 Public Relations Officer. We did want to wish, and we have wished, all the retiring teachers and classified employees a happy and well-deserved retirement today. I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the efforts and the contributions that the BUSD classified workers have given to support the district as it reaches the end of the 2023-2024 school year. Many classified employees have worked really hard to provide support to every school's promotion and graduation ceremony. The clerical staff have even worked diligently after the students left for summer break. They've been in the schools still helping the administration close the books and get ready for the next school year. Special ed instructional assistance staff are currently working during the summer throughout their programs and their activities. Other departments throughout the district, like custodial, maintenance, food services, and technology, they're busy all year long. So we just wanted to recognize and acknowledge that classified employees are a valuable component of this district. They help close the school year, they help open the school year, they help bridge all of the breaks in between. We're already looking forward to the coming 2024-2025 school year and to continue supporting the needs of this great school district. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Anthony. Can PTA President Linda Morgan come on up? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Critchfield, sorry. Members of the board, interim Superintendent Azaveto, staff, and community members. I'm actually going to hand it over to one of my fellow board members in a sec, but I want to take a quick moment and thank Ms. Azaveto, Critchfield, and Amy Stewart for stopping by our PTA meeting last week after one of your meetings and taking the time to answer a couple of our parents' questions. I appreciate all of you listening to our parents, students, and community. You've obviously been attending your meetings or watching and paying attention to all the changes happening, and I'm actually excited to see where those changes are going to lead us. I also want to thank President Critchfield for meeting with me this week. I appreciate your feedback, suggestions, and support. And as for our PTAs, we're in transition, finishing up this term, getting ready for our new term that starts July 1st with our new officers, and getting ready for the upcoming school year. But for the actual report, I'm going to hand it over to Sylvia Jones. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, cabinet members, students, families, teachers, staff, and community members. My name is Sylvia Jones, and I am here on behalf of Bellflower Council of PTAs. I'm here to read a letter signed by the Council PTA President and the Presidents of the 12 PTAs within the district. Dear Bellflower Unified School District School Board Members, On behalf of the members of the Bellflower Council of PTA, we write to you to create a community screening committee to help identify qualified candidates for the permanent superintendent position. Bellflower Council PTA respectfully requests that two Bellflower Council PTA leaders be part of this committee, one from the north and one from the south school sites. In addition to PTA members, the committee could include teachers, staff, parents, students, and community members. The community could work with the board's search consultant to help identify the qualities needed for the superintendent, give input on the superintendent's job announcement, provide outreach to stakeholders to increase participation in the surveys and forums, and recommend the best candidates for the board's consideration and interview. Selecting an effective superintendent must be the board's top priority. It is critical that the district rebuild confidence with the students, parents, and community it serves. Creating this committee could be an important step in the right direction. Thank you for your leadership. The purpose of this letter is to request a community screening committee for the future permanent superintendent. The involvement of educational partners in this committee will provide valuable feedback, perspective, and insight to the board. Selecting a well-qualified superintendent to meet the needs of our diverse student population will take time. Thus, the process of finding our next superintendent should start soon. I have copies of the letter for the board members. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. All right, it is now time for our superintendent's report. Ms. Azaveto.
Thank you. I have some pictures to share with everyone this evening from our graduation ceremonies. We're going to get that up and running for you. As we wrap up the end of the school year, I am absolutely filled with pride and joy in being able to celebrate all of our senior graduation events. Our students' hard work, resilience, and achievement are a testament to each of them, their families, our staff, and the entire BUSD community. Thank you to everyone who contributed. I'm excited and look forward to the upcoming 24-25 school year. Our summer programs are off to a great start. We are offering enrichment programs for our elementary, middle, and high school students. I'd like to highlight one of those special opportunities. We have a partnership going right now with Harbor Freight Tools for Schools. At one of our high schools, instructor Nate Drown is working with students this summer to build a new tiny home on the Mayfair High School campus. This is an exciting opportunity for our students, and we look forward to seeing pictures in the upcoming social media posts regarding that tiny home. So again, thank you to all of our staff for their assistance. This definitely is a lot of work to put together all of your celebrations at the end of the year, so congratulations to all of our students and our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. We have two discussion items this evening. Ms. Azaveto.
Yes, at this time, Dr. Deidre Reyes and Mrs. Carter will present the LCAP Local Indicator.
And I'm going to pass the baton over to Dr. Reyes. She will be presenting tonight.
Okay, good evening, President Critchfield and members of the Board of Education. Annually, as part of the California School Dashboard Update, the local indicators are presented in preparation for reporting on the 2024 dashboard, which will be released in December. Tonight, I will be sharing specific information on our local indicators that will be posted on the 2024 dashboard release. The California School Dashboard is part of California's accountability system. California requires monitoring and reporting of state and local indicators that measure how districts and schools are meeting the needs of their students. CDE populates the state indicators, and performance on local measures are collected and reported to the dashboard by the district. The data posted to the dashboard is used to develop school and district improvement plans. It helps us to focus on what is needed to improve student outcomes and helps us to ensure equity by highlighting any disparities that may exist among student groups. This slide is an overview of the state and local indicators included on the dashboard, and the four local indicators that I will report on tonight are listed on the slide. The criteria for meeting the local indicators are outlined by the state and shown on this slide. As part of the process, districts are required to report the results of the local indicators to the governing board in order to receive a designation of MET on the dashboard. As we review the local indicators together, you will notice that you've already seen some of this data as part of our mid-year annual update and our LCAP metrics. The first indicator is basic conditions. This priority addresses appropriately assigned teachers, access to curriculum-lined instructional materials, and safe, clean, and functional school facilities. At this time, we do not have the data for fully credentialed and appropriately placed staff, as this number is provided by the state and has not been populated as of today. This will be shared when the state provides this data. The FIT inspection is a facility inspection tool that occurs annually at all sites, and you can see all of our sites are in good or exemplary repair. Priority 2 measures our progress in implementing the state academic standards. For this purpose, we monitor our professional learning communities, or the PLC process, at our school sites. The percentages that you see there are outcomes of the site-reported implementation survey and the LCAP survey. So 87% of our sites report that they are developing or above in building collaborative cultures. This is foundational and shows that we have the time and the structure to build powerful PLCs, and our teachers can focus on the important instructional work that happens during PLC time. For example, on the LCAP survey, 54% of teachers and staff strongly agree, excuse me, and agree that the school curriculum is focused enough that it can be adequately addressed in the time available to teachers. This is an area which is addressed during the aforementioned PLC time, where teachers can work together to not merely go page by page through instructional materials, but take the time to identify essential standards that students must meet in order to be successful in the next grade level, and pace instruction as a team to ensure students meet the standards. Priority 3 addresses parent and family engagement. The information gathered to measure this indicator is taken from our LCAP survey. Priority 3 is broken into three areas: building relationships, building partnerships, and seeking input. According to our LCAP survey, we have high percentages of parents who agree and strongly agree with the statements on the chart that address building relationships with our families, including our parents feeling welcome at school, having two-way communication in a language that is understandable and accessible, and families feeling that the school staff treats them with respect. The next two components for priority 3 are building partnerships and seeking input. The data from the LCAP survey shows that the majority of parents agree and strongly agree with all statements that address building partnerships and seeking input. School sites do receive their individual LCAP data and use this information to strengthen procedures and processes. Priority 6 looks at school climate and addresses perceptions of school safety and connectedness. This priority is measured with the LCAP survey and also the parent, teacher, and student responses to the California Healthy Kids Survey. The results of the survey show that parents report a high percentage of feeling welcome at school, and our staff reports a high percentage of feeling a responsibility to continuously improve their school. And the percentage from our staff is one of the highest percentages that we have on our surveys and is very positive. School connectedness is traditionally rated lower by secondary students. However, there has been an increase in the percentage of secondary students saying that they feel connected to the school because of their friends, resources, supportive teachers, clubs, activities, and sports. All schools continue to work on strategies for building meaningful relationship between staff and students, as this is a clear way to increase connectedness at school. Schools also conduct the Panorama Survey with students in third grade and up, and the questions on that survey directly address school connectedness and show schools their strengths, their areas for growth, and they also provide resources and suggestions for developing relationships and improving school climate. And many of the school sites shared this data with you at the board review last January. Still on priority 6, which also looks at perceptions of safety at school. The percentage of parents and staff strongly agreeing or agreeing that the school is a safe place for students remains high. The percentage of students at the elementary and secondary level has increased on the Healthy Kids Survey. This measure is reported from 5th, 7th, 9th, and 11th grade students. However, the LCAP survey is administered to our students from 5th through 12th grades. Sites receive their specific information to analyze. Our schools have all developed safety plans, have included parents on their safety committees, and have done a great job of communicating what their safety procedures are to our parents. And finally, priority 7. It's measured locally through analysis of a broad course of study for students. All students have access to a broad course of study, and when we look at the proportionality of student group enrollment in CTE, fine arts, and advanced course... and when we look at the proportionality of student group enrollment in CTE, fine arts, and advanced courses, all students are proportionate with the exception of our English learners who are less likely to be enrolled in a CTE or advanced course. However, more English learners were enrolled in CTE courses this year when compared to last year. We will continue to evaluate our practices and make revisions as necessary to always ensure that our students have access to a broad course of study. The local indicators that I've shared with you will be submitted to the dashboard by July 31st. This information will then be combined with the state indicators, and the anticipated date for the 2024 dashboard release is December 1st, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reyes. Any questions from the board? Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Critchfield. My questions start on page... Page... oops, let's see, one, two, three, four, page four, where it says priority two, implementation of state academic standards.
Yes.
So on the bar graph, we see that we have eighty-seven percent during our PLC building collaborative culture. What are the markers that show that we met this goal? How can we tell?
Well, it's reported from the site. So for each of the levels from initiating, implementing, developing, and sustaining, we have a rubric which outlines the characteristics of a PLC that's building a collaborative culture. So our sites are provided with that rubric, so they would go through. Some principals have each grade level do it and look at where they are. And then, in order, let's say you're at implementing, right? So you've marked off, you say, "I feel we're implementing in this." What do we need to do to get to developing? So what pieces? So it's a way to continually strengthen your PLCs because you're acknowledging, hey, we've gotten this far, this is what we have, and here's where we need to go next. So there's high ratings for building that culture, which talks about you have teams, you have time for your teams to meet. And then, as you go up, it's more about what kinds of conversations are happening in those teams.
Okay, so then, is this rubric... I'm not sure if you would happen to know the answer to this, but is this rubric provided to teachers every single time they are meeting in their PLCs?
I don't know if they look at it every time they meet. It's something that I know principals definitely look at at the beginning of the year and then would revisit throughout the year, maybe as a whole group. That would be up to the team, so I'm not sure if each team is actually looking at it at each. But doing it at the beginning of the year helps you to set goals for your PLC. So principals do ask their grade level or department PLCs to have goals that they're reaching because they can be at different levels across the school. So that rubric would be very helpful in seeing, are we meeting them? And where do we want to keep going after that?
Okay, and so now my next question, if the president would allow me. Thank you. Priority three, I'm under the eighty-five percent two-way communication between families. What was our previous goal? Do you remember by any chance?
For the communication between families, if you'll just give me one second. Priority three, of course, has three components to it, so let me make sure I'm on the right one.
And don't get me wrong, eighty-five percent is...
And last year, it was eighty-five percent.
Okay, so...
So we've maintained.
So we've maintained that. Okay, well, at least we haven't lost any. But so what do we have at this moment? Do we have next year's goals by any chance? Or, like you said, does that happen as well for the initial start of the school year?
Are you talking about the LCAP survey or getting that?
The goal of eighty-five percent, I'm sure that I, as other board members, would like to see it go up higher. When is that set?
Okay, so the school sites have already received their individual LCAP results. So what I'm showing you is obviously the whole district. We put it all together. So as a principal, then you receive your percentages, maybe higher than that, maybe lower than that, because that's everyone together. So those goals and looking at the goal of parent communication or parent getting input or parents at partners, they would, each site would set those at the beginning of the year, but they have this information as their baseline to know where their own parents rated it in their survey.
Thank you, and I will ask my rest of my questions later.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. I do have a question, then I'll go over to Dr. Sue. So that, these notes, so I was, in the LCAP, the LCAP goals for parent participation rate is forty-seven percent. Are these supposed to correlate in a way? So the parent participation rate? For the language, yeah, so like, what I'm curious about is, it says eighty percent feel welcome to participate at my child's school. I'm just thinking, like, feeling welcome and actually participating. How do we, how do we get that higher? Like, because in, when I look at the LCAP, I notice having like these parent workshops and getting parents actually to engage with our campuses. Like, there's got to be something we could do. I mean, eighty percent is great here. I just, feeling welcome and actually getting on campus and engaged are just two different things.
When you say the forty-seven, are you talking about on the LCAP metric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that LCAP metric is done with our parent tracker, which our principals report on. And if that, we can only do that metric based on what is reported to us on the parent tracker. So we're reliant on that. This information that I'm sharing with you tonight is coming directly from our parents. It's the LCAP survey, so they're coming from two different places.
Okay, so it looks like they feel welcome to participate, but that'd be a conversation that we can have, you know, how do we change things up to where if they feel it, what are we offering them when it comes to workshops and events and how to get them engaged and how do we do that?
And I think every site is focused on that. And every site will tell you that they want to increase the parents actually being there and coming onsite, and then they're all at varying levels. So again, with their own information, both from the LCAP survey and examining parent tracker, making sure that everything is, you know, submitted on that. They have pretty good data to come up with a plan. And I think our principals talk and learn from each other's things that work and get the parents, get the parents in.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. O'Hesson.
Thank you, Dr. Reyes. You always do an excellent job. Thank you. My question really is related to the six indicators and, number one, the chronic absenteeism. So how is that going to be measured in regards to the overall goals? I didn't see anything mentioned in the different priorities, but I would see it really coming under building the parent and family engagement in regards to making sure parents knew the importance of their kids showing up at school.
Absolutely.
And I'm making that assumption, but I didn't see it anywhere, so.
No, it's a good assumption. I mean, we're looking at state indicators and local indicators. So I remember saying last year, we don't have it all together yet till the dashboard release comes, and hopefully we will see a decrease in our chronic absenteeism. But I think the parent engagement piece is very important and also looking at that school connectedness piece.
Right.
And really, that's how the state and local indicators work together. So if we can look at school connectedness and put in measures that make students feel connected to school, that in itself is going to help the chronic absenteeism rate. So no, I don't have those kinds of percentages for you tonight where we are with chronic absenteeism because that's the side of the dashboard that's populated by the state. But I think you've made a good connection there where you can see how local indicators are impacting those state indicators.
Right, and then action steps to help support that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Ms. Stewart?
I have a question. It could be for you, for Ms. Acevedo, or Bonnie. Just looking at the two-way communication, I know we're implementing Parent Square. Is there translation in Parent Square? Because I know I get it, but it's always in English. But is there a way to contact with Parent Square to our Spanish-speaking students and families? And if you don't have the answer, will you just let us know Friday?
I can let you know on Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, and right back to you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, President Critchfield. I'm still continuing on priority three, parent and family engagement. I see that we're at seventy-four, seventy-seven, twice, seventy-seven, seventy-seven. And these are more of how parents are feeling about meeting with teachers and students. Child, my child's school provides families with information, administers teachers and staff, partner with families to support student success. Do we know at this point why these parents feel this way? I know that they were polled, and this is what we got back. Do we know a little bit more details about this information? Because seventy-four, seventy-seven, and seventy-seven, to me, is a C grade. And I've always been an A and B student myself, but I would love to see this where we can actually make some goals and reach them. I think that these are probably something that we have more control over. So is there a plan to kind of bump this up a little?
Yeah, I mean, there's a place, we get some comments from parents, you know, about being involved. And then, of course, you can see with the seventy-seven, those parents, of course, are saying, you know, "I feel involved, I get involved." We also have to look at who's not necessarily agreeing with those statements or what are they saying. And so some parents did express that they don't know how to get involved. So again, if you're a school site principal, you get your own, you get your own comments. So as a principal, looking at that, don't know how, okay, that's something that I need to address, and that can be easily fixed. Some parents ask, you know, they're concerned because they work and they wish there was more flexible times or more meetings online. And then some parents said, you know, they do want to get involved in PTA, but they're not, I don't want to necessarily go to board meetings and have to, you know, do all of that. So just understanding that PTA is more than the board. There are lots of ways you can get involved. So I think for each school, analyzing those comments and looking at what their parents are saying gives them the starting point to make a plan. If parents are saying they don't understand or they don't really know how to get involved, that's easily solved.
Ms. Garza, you mind if I jump over to Ms. Stewart, then I'll come right back? We'll kind of jump around a little bit.
I just want to piggyback off what she's saying. This survey, is it all of our students or is this Healthy Kids survey, or where is this page coming from?
Is this the parent and family, the one we're talking about now, Seeking Income?
Yes.
That comes from our LCAP survey.
Okay, so that's the one that's sent out to all the parents in the community at the end and teachers and everybody, basically?
That is the one that goes out, and then we had six hundred and thirteen parent responses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Ms. Acevedo, I know this is your first year being our intern superintendent, but by any chance, and you probably have to have some conversations with your staff, is this something that we will be addressing with principals? Because like I said, these just seem like they're so easily to maybe bump ourselves up, maybe five, seventy-seven percent, we're almost there. I'm like, that almost met, right, nearly met goals.
Sure, let me have a conversation with Bonnie and her team first, and then we'll come up with a plan.
Perfect, thank you so much. And one more item, if I may. Thank you. My, I'm going to jump over to priority seven, access to broad course of study. Under elementary report cards, access broad course studies reflected by elementary report cards. I really would love for us, Ms. Acevedo, to kind of start looking at our report cards, our achievement reports. Because I can tell you for a fact that in DI, it does not necessarily reflect everything that is necessary for that program. It really needs, again, to be adapted, maybe modified. Just, if you can please look at it from your end, your angle, and see if maybe there would be something that we could do about that. Because I believe that right now, and I'm going off of this as a previous employee, and my knowledge of that. It was really difficult for our parents to understand the achievement report. So maybe just kind of looking at that and seeing, how can we make it more comprehensible for our parents? And to be able to kind of read it and maybe add those modifications for the DI program that include our levels for our ELS perhaps on that achievement report?
Okay, so for clarification, you're asking to take a look at the current elementary report card and how it addresses our DI students? And also in particular, to DIEL students?
Absolutely, yes. It's more of a lens of, for our DI students and the ELS within that program. I'm not saying that we're not addressing these things, but maybe we can do a little, maybe a better job of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Ms. Stewart?
Question, Ms. Garza. Are you talking about like with the report cards, with like the comments that you put so that they understand? Or I'm not elementary, so can you just explain to me what you're talking about?
Yes, so right now, as it is from when I was an employee here, we have an English report card. It can be translated into Spanish for the parents. But a lot of times, it's, the verbiage on there doesn't necessarily help our parents and give them a lot of feedback as to where to help them. Like, if I say number sense, like, what is number sense? How do I, as a parent, read my report card? And maybe it's just like, maybe we'll have to have, I don't know, I'm just spitballing here. I'm not saying what to do, you know, but maybe just an education on achievement reports, you know, at the beginning of the school year, so that way parents understand what they're looking at.
Is this something, just to explain more, Bonnie, is it like something that comes out with their progress reports? Or is it only for report cards? Do they sit down with parents and go over these?
Well, when you look at the report cards, the strands that are there that Ms. Garza is talking about are directly from our standards. And so it'll say things like key details or integrating vocabulary. And so what I believe she's talking about is maybe a resource to the side of the report card that explains what that means for the grade level for which the parent is getting the report card for. And that would be something that they could do at parent conferences. It's the first thing in the beginning of the year, and I know that many teachers do talk about standards at that time, but if that resource was possibly provided. And just a little clarification on the DI report cards. I know we revised them, I believe, after you were gone, to make sure that we had an English side and a Spanish side. It is still connected to the standard as far as the verbiage that is on there, but we wanted to make it clearer of which topics and subject matters are taught in English versus Spanish. Is that what you were looking for or a little bit more?
Well, I was looking for a little bit more just because I think maybe perhaps looking at it with a DI lens is maybe necessary for our achievement reports at this point. Because, like I said, a lot of it, as a teacher, I don't, I don't believe that, well, let me restate this. Perhaps teachers don't have enough time to go through all of those standards because they only have about thirty minutes to discuss those achievement reports with parents. But if we can maybe do some, you know, some work before they come in and educate our parents as to what does key details and ideas look like.
Right, and it could be something that's on our website.
Yes.
But I think what I'm hearing you say is there's also an education in how our DI students are learning the language because it is going to take time, so maybe a little bit more education in that area.
Absolutely, because it is a progression, and they have about seven years to be dominant in the language. And it's very different than the way you develop the English. So it really would, I'm hoping that it would help us, help our parents.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. I'm going to kick it over to Ms. Stewart here, but I do have one more question. On priority six, the secondary students feel connected to school, and then at fifty-seven and sixty-six percent for the elementary students feel connected to school. I know we've talked a lot about, you know, trying to give our middle schools their own identity and their own sense of belonging. Is it possible to get this survey to like identify how much of that difference is from the middle school students? Is that possible? Like, have a third column from just like the...
Oh, you want to just break out middle school? Yeah, we can do that because we ask them to, it's an anonymous survey, but we do identify grade levels.
I think that'd be great because I wonder if, where they would fall in that. That'd be awesome if we could do that. Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
Sorry, going back to what Ms. Garza was talking about, I am not familiar... Sorry, going back to what Ms. Garza was talking about, I am not familiar with these elementary achievement reports. Is it possible to just get a copy of one on our Friday memo, just so I can look at it, so I understand more?
Yeah, absolutely, just one grade level, right?
No, no, yeah, just one grade level. Unless you want to do all of them, Bonnie?
They're on the site already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you, Dr. Riss, you do always do such a great job, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is now time for our last discussion item. Back to you, Ms. Acevedo.
Yes, thank you. Our last discussion item is regarding the online candidate statement. I'm going to turn it over to our General Counsel, Andrew Sarega, to go through that item with you.
Thank you, Madam Infirm Superintendent. This item came from the county to the district. It is a result of Election Code thirteen three oh seven, subsection C one two, and thirteen three oh seven point seven. Basically, the county created a pilot program last election where for candidates for county office would be able to file their candidate statement online and forego the print. The problem with the print was very costly. For countywide elections, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars. So they put out this pilot program where for two hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents, they would post the candidate statement online at lavote.net, and allow the candidates to forego the printed version. As a result of the perceived success of that program, they've now opened it up to any agency that has an election within the county. They sent an email basically requesting that the district either opt in or opt out of this program. So tonight, what we're looking for is direction from the board, basically deciding whether they would be in favor of allowing online candidate statements only, they would no longer be in print at the reduced price, or if they want to opt out and continue with the printed candidate statements. Those candidate statements generally go on the voter guides. But if we opt in, they will now be online at lavote.net, where any voter would be able to access it, should they have internet access.
Thank you. Questions from the board, we'll start with Vice President Stewart.
So is it two hundred and seventy-nine dollars per candidate, or is that the total where they can all go on and they can fill it out online?
I believe it's per candidate.
Okay, but currently, we're paying a thousand dollars for English and a thousand dollars for Spanish for our candidates, so we're paying two thousand dollars a candidate, and this would save us a lot of money.
It would save the candidate's money, yes.
Well, actually, in our district, we pay for those statements.
And it would save the district money.
Correct, okay. Go ahead, I might have another one, but I'll come back.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Madam Clerk, Garza?
Thank you, President Chrisfield. Does this mean, does this mean that they were never, I'm sorry, that these candidates would not have their statements included in the ballot then, when they get it?
So it would no longer be in print version, it would be solely online.
So then if, for say, a stakeholder doesn't have access to internet, then they would not be able to see it?
Correct.
Okay, do we have to, or go to doing this, or is this like something that we have choice over?
Completely the board's decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Ms. Stewart?
We're basically having a discussion on it. I'm going to be honest, like, I know how important the books are, and I understand people don't have internet, but a lot of times, the ballots are out before you even get your books. And so I don't know, I don't know how important it is. I would be in favor of probably doing them online. I feel like more people would read online than in the actual books that come out after the ballots. That's just my opinion, so I would be in favor of it.
So as a general, just kind of, you know, where the trend is going, it seems to be like they will be trending toward online anyway in the future. The county is trying to cut costs, reduce expenditure of resources, things of that nature. So it does seem like there's a big push to go online. At this point, it is voluntary. I cannot say that it won't be mandatory in the future.
Thank you. Can I ask, how, how long has the, the district pays for the candidate statements currently?
I just ran two years ago, and our candidate statements were paid for by the district.
They were, but four years ago, they weren't. So did it, did it just, why did it start?
I would have to research that, I don't have that information right here.
Okay, because I know four years ago, had to pay, and then two years ago, no. So if, say, a candidate were to run, they, they would only be able to do it online? Or could they opt to pay for the print and online?
It would be solely online.
Be solely online? Interesting. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Garza, go for it.
Sorry, didn't clear my...
Anyway, they're just popping off now. All right, I think that's, and is there any direction that you need from us this evening? Or is this something that can, is there a time?
There is a bit of a time constraint, because these things have to go out, and they're going to start printing at some point in the near future. However, the other thing I would like to mention is, I will look into the issue of the district paying for the candidate statement. It's highly irregular that a public agency would, would do that for an election.
Felt the same way.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if that will be an option in the next election, that the district actually pay for those. If it did happen, it was years ago, and, you know, it is what it is. But I, I think going forward, that would be something that would probably not be available to candidates.
Well, I will say, it seemed to happen when there was a bunch of incumbents running. And the time that there were no incumbents, it didn't happen, so it's probably something there. But I think we should look into it and find out what's best practice, and what's the most fair, and what's not going to disincentivize somebody to want to, to run, so. So I, I don't think, is, is there any more discussion on this? Do we need more clarity, or more time to think about this, to give them direction?
So we have to notify them by tomorrow.
By tomorrow, okay. So, so there's no time crunch? I'm kidding, kidding. So the vote, well, it wouldn't be a, what's on, it's not an action item, just discussion?
It's direction of staff, it's a response to an email that was put out by the county, staff will respond to that email.
Could we go down the line, I mean, it's not a vote, because we're not...
Still got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Stewart, go for it.
My question is, because I did just run off supply you with my thousand dollar receipts, if you'd like to see them. But if we do that, do we need to change the policy? Is that something that we as a board would have to do, is change that policy if it does say that in there?
No, so you wouldn't need a resolution to authorize it, this is done through the county, since the county runs the election. And just wanted to clarify a statement that you made. You had a thousand dollar receipt from the, the district?
From the county, the, the district pays for it, a thousand dollars for English, a thousand dollars for Spanish. So it was two thousand dollars, I didn't pay for it. You can look in the book, and mine's in there, because the district paid for it. And every district is different, I know other districts that pay for it as well. So it's just depending on the district, so that's where I'm wondering if there's a policy or something that might be needed to be looked at.
So generally, that wouldn't be in the board policy, because the county runs the elections, they're the ones that would set that policy of, of how they conduct.
The district wouldn't have a policy on whether they pay for it or not?
No, no, not on paying for it or not. On the candidate statements and how they are done, what the cost is, they set those rates.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so whether the district pays for it or not, yes, that's a district policy. This evening, it's just simply if you guys want to go online with it, or continue to do it in print, and then a discussion can be had on, on the district's policy in regard, regards to payment of those candidate statements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Dr. O'Hesson?
I think it'd be a conflict of interest for the district to pay for a candidate statement, because the district does not support candidates. And so therefore, they are supposed to be neutral. They do not pay. The county could be reimbursing you, I got money back for my candidacy, but the district does not pay. There's no budget line item that we pay for candidates. Correct me if I'm wrong, Salima.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Ms. Stewart?
Again, I just went through this, and the district paid for my statements. I won't continue to argue, but it's really, some districts want to do that so that people will apply, and some people will run, and they can get their candidate statements in there. So this isn't something that's like super far reaching, I know a lot of districts that do that. But again, I would be in favor to going online, we're going to online, so if I were giving direction, I would say to go online only, thank you.
Yeah, to echo Ms. Stewart, because it was not just incumbents who benefited from it, so it's to enhance how many people can run and can afford to run. So it makes sense, but it should be somewhere in policy. I, to be honest, I, I don't have a strong feeling on this. I would like to look into it more. Let's go down the, the line, Ms. Garza?
I would not be in favor of going online just yet. I think that it's necessary for, you know, our communities to be able to see it in written form as well. Not, I can tell you that not everyone goes online, not everybody reads emails. It's getting harder and harder for a lot of families to do this. But if it's placed in front of them on a book, then I see where they would sit down and be forced to kind of look at it and make a more educated decision, or informed decision. So my vote is no.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. I would say, it does seem like it's inevitable that things will go online only, but when you look at like the, the high propensity voter, they kind of rely on that print. Yeah, Ms. Stewart?
If we decide not to go online, can that be changed year to year, election to election? Or are you just stuck with that?
That's going to be up to the, the county if they continue to, to open that up and offer it. I would be fairly confident that they're going to allow you to opt into the next election if you so choose.
Okay, I think I would be for it if they had the books out before the ballots, but again, most people, you already vote before you even get the books, so again, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, and I do know you can do the online and the printed if you choose, right? For, for candidates, like they give you a...
So the, the county offers various options for printing and posting of candidate statements. There was an election where they just put them online anyway, and they did the print. But again, it seems like they're trying to get away from printing due to the costs. And, I mean, they haven't come out with their schedule yet for this year. I assume it would be more expensive than the previous election due to some of the inflationary factors. And so in order to kind of assist with the rising costs of, of doing that method of information dispersment, I truly believe that they're going to go online fully within the next couple of election cycles.
Thank you. Well, my, I think changing anything, how we do things with elections during an election year, and let alone so close, probably isn't the best thing to do, it's a timing. So this might be something we look at next year. For, for myself, I'd be in favor of keeping it the way it is, because that's what voters are expecting. If we need to change it in the future, we can. But so my, my direction would be that, I wouldn't be in favor of this right now. Dr. O'Hesson?
I think that county's going to decide to do whatever they're going to do regardless of what we say.
Thank you for that. Oh, it's two-two, right? Well, I don't know, what was that? What, what is that? Is that like an abstain, like, we're trying to give them direction?
It sounded like they basically made their decision, but now they're just offering school boards an option to decide what, what they'd like. So they've already made the decision, go online. If we want to pay for ourselves to go the print, then that's still a viable option. So I don't see it as a yes or a no, I think they've already made up their minds.
Okay, what is the, the question on, on the table here, when it comes to giving you clear direction?
So we either opt in to going online only, or we opt out, and they continue to print, and whatever cost they put out for that, district will be stuck with it. Again, the only thing I, I did want to caution is they have not released the cost yet for print. So if that cost is higher, what they did not make clear is if the candidate would be able to do it online only.
Got it. But that's a, that could be a separate question, as far as the district's participation in that cost?
Well, the, so the issue is going to be that if we opt out this evening, or give direction to opt out, candidates might not be able to post their candidate statements online only, because we didn't participate in the program. So they will be forced to pay for the print unless the district decides to cover it.
Can we find out that what the relative cost would be, and have that in the Friday memo? And then Ms. Acevedo can provide direction after talking to the board members?
So the problem is that the county has not released that schedule. They need an answer prior to that schedule getting released. So that's, that's the conundrum right now in the decision, is if we, if the district decides to opt in, the cost is fixed at roughly two hundred eighty dollars. If the district opts out, the cost is unknown, because the county has not yet released those numbers. And we don't know what it's going to be for, for this year, given kind of everything that goes on. And I will also mention that because other entities are going online, printing costs will likely go up, because they're not printing in the quantities that they were before. So all factors to consider.
Right, that's it.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Dr. O'Hesson?
So it's going to be in other languages too, the digital?
The digital will be in, in multiple languages, yes. Actually, I believe the digital will be in every language that they offer.
Then I think, because the cost for having it in multiple languages is quite high. So if it's online for the same cost for multiple languages, I think that's a better option for candidates. So you got my answer?
And I don't think you're going to have this answer, but I'm going to ask anyways. The two seventy-nine, is that again, that's for all the languages? Because again, right now, there's a separation between if you want it in English or Spanish, which most candidates do both. But if you do the two seventy-nine, it's going to cover all languages.
So that, I will have to clarify with the county, because they were not clear on that. My, my guess is that because they're, they're doing this cost-saving measure and adding incentives, it would, but I can clarify with the county to make sure that it does cover all translations.
Okay. If it does cover all translations, then again, we're talking about two thousand minimum, or more, depending on printing costs, compared to the two seventy-nine. Correct. I'd still be in favor, yes.
Any other questions by the board? No?
So now what do we do when it's two-two?
So unlike in baseball, a tie does not go to the runner, and we would opt out at this point.
I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you. All right, on to our last, wait, that was the last discussion. Now we're going to major action, we have two major action items this evening. The first item is twelve point one, Approval of Deputy Superintendent Employment Contract. All right, I got some reading to do. Government Code Section five four nine five three, C three requires that the following statement be read in open session before action is taken on the employment agreement for the deputy superintendent. The Brown Act requires that the Board of Education make an oral summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive. Consistent with this requirement, the board provides the following oral summary of salary and fringe benefits as outlined in the employment agreement for deputy superintendent between the Bellflower Unified School District and Dr. Ryan Smith. The term is effective June first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, salary of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Fringe benefits, participation in the STIRS retirement program. Participation in the same health and welfare benefits program provided to other certificated management employees. Eight thousand annual stipend for the travel and business-related expenses, including mileage. Twelve hundred and fifty dollars annual stipend for a doctoral degree. The district may pay for the dues for relevant professional organizations of Dr. Smith's choice, subject to board approval. Do we have questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President, if I can add a, a couple of things, some questions were, were laid out... Mr. President, if I can add a couple things, some questions were laid out during the public comment, so I just want to clarify. The May 24th date that is currently listed on that agreement was the date that it was presented to Dr. Ryan. However, that date will be revised to reflect the June 1st term laid out in the public meeting this evening. In addition, the June 3rd date at the bottom was simply a placeholder until the Board could convene and actually approve the ratification, this contract. That date will also be changed to reflect the date on which the Board actually took the vote to either approve or not approve the contract.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Madam Clerk, Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. I just wanna read some comments on here. I believe I did some, I requested some, like, some question, I had a question about how many Unified School Districts in our area actually had executive contracts for their cabinet members? And I believe at this point, we have about 14 surrounding districts. Some of them are Paramount, Norwalk, La Mirada, and Monrovia. This is, I believe, something that we need at this point. We don't have, we need a lot of hands on deck, especially coming up to a new school year. It's important that the transition from tradition to best practices is, you know, recommended by leading industry agencies can significantly benefit a school district, and that these practices are rooted in evidence-based strategies that are designed to optimize efficiency, equity, and student success. So I am in agreement of offering this contract. It is very necessary. We do have a decline in enrollment. That is something that I will, you know, we can't turn away from and just negate, but this is also something that our district needs at this point. We need executives who know what they're doing, that are capable of what they are, that they have, what they have been hired for. So at this time, I believe that this is the best, you know, option, and this is a great option for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dr. O'Hesson?
So for the sake of transparency, as a board member, I never saw a job description either. So that's one thing I would like to know, really, how does he fit to our organizational structure? What specific, I never saw a resume. What specific qualifications do you think that this is addressed to our assistant superintendent? Who, what different departments would he be overseeing? There is so much ambiguity that was not presented to the Board, or not to this Board member. So I'm not sure if other Board members were privy to information, but I was not. And I didn't see in regards to the salary schedule for the position. We don't have this position, so how was the salary schedule created? And who negotiated it?
I think that's a question...
So I can tell you in terms of...
I'm asking our administrator, our superintendent. She oversees administration.
So as far as the actual contract development, this is a typical contract for an executive cabinet member. The format of the contract, the actual writing of the contract, I did in collaboration with our general counsel to ensure that the district was covered and that all items within that contract met a contract agreement.
That wasn't my question. My question was, how, and for this particular salary schedule, since we do not have this position as deputy superintendent, there was no salary schedule created. So how was his salary determined? Based on what?
So typically, an executive cabinet member is provided a salary offer that's negotiated through the process of developing that contract.
So if there is no schedule, salary schedule assigned since a new position that's created, we don't have a job description identifying the duties, the essential functions, the marginal functions of the position. How is salary determined based on that? Without those factors?
I'll allow our general counsel to jump in, but I can also share with you that your current associate superintendent is not on that management salary as well. So not all cabinet positions are listed on your management scale. This is not atypical.
That's not what I understand. Based on salary schedules, they're in steps. So they're, they start at a particular level and they can increase.
Correct. You have that for an assistant superintendent.
Right.
Not for an associate, not for a deputy, and not for a superintendent.
Right. So that's what I'm asking. We don't have a job description. Do you have a job description?
I would be happy to share with you a typical job description for deputy superintendent.
We want, I mean, a job description that fits our district. You're saying it's needed, we value his skills, which I don't know those are, what those are yet.
So Dr. O'Hesson, I'll come back to you if you have more questions. I'll go over to Ms. Stewart.
I just wanna say I'm in favor of this. I think that we can all see on our board agendas, and I don't believe any one board member or two board members or three board members are given any other information that you're not given. We all get the same memos, we all have the same discussions, we have discussions in closed session that we're not allowed to talk with our public. And if you look at our board agendas right now, we're down some people. I think that's public knowledge at this point, and we need some support. So having a deputy superintendent come in to support our interim superintendent, who's basically doing everything by herself, is needed. And so I would support this and agree 100% with this. It's a temporary two-year contract, and we need it. And if you want to go look at the organizational chart and see what's lacking, I think everyone in the public would see that we need some help before we put people in place. So I support this.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Madam Clerk, Garza? Oh, see it? Andrew? Legal?
I wanted to clarify something real quick. So salary schedule exists currently for associate superintendent. However, deputy superintendent, this position is not something, it's being created and voted on by the Board this evening. The salary amount is, as interim superintendent Acevedo stated, something that is negotiated. The reason that you don't have steps or anything of that nature is because it is a termed contract, which means that for two years, this individual will receive this salary. It does not go up or down based on any other negotiations that take place with other union organizations. Anything that is changed in this contract is done so by Board approval. So if the Board at the end of two years wants to extend the contract, raise the salary, do any of those things, these kind of contracts for executive management allow for the flexibility to be able to do that. In addition, in terms of the organizational chart, that has yet to be basically presented to the Board because it is currently in flux, but this position has been deemed necessary by the superintendent, and that's why it's being brought forth to the Board this evening. In terms of any kind of set positions, this is an exempt position. That's why it's now on contract, similar to the next item that will be presented to the Board. It's general best practice to have executive-level positions on contract, because it allows the Board greater flexibility in terms of decisions that are made regarding separation and so on and so forth. Otherwise, you default to the ed code, which basically forces the Board to be stuck until a March 15th notice can be given to the individual. So this is a much more flexible and detailed structure that basically allows for fluidity of change should it arise.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Good. Madam Clerk, Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. I also want to tell, make my board member aware that I also had questions about it, and I reached out to our superintendent, just like you and our other board members have encouraged other board members in other occasions to do so. And I had a conversation with her because I asked her the same thing, similar to what you're asking, like, I asked how many other districts have this? And she provided that. I believe I had a, my point is that I did reach out, I did have that conversation, I did ask those questions. We were, as board members, given that opportunity, and no one here is getting more information than the other, if that's what I'm assuming you're insinuating.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Garza. Dr. O'Hesson, do you have a comment?
Yes, I haven't finished my question. So if you...
Go for it.
We're a public institution, so did you post this position?
As you're aware, not all administrative positions require to be posted.
And since he's already started and working the position, so he's already receiving his benefits and so forth, or he's just working for free now?
This is technically a ratification. So you're ratifying a contract that's dated June 1st.
So in that case, he is, when you're saying we're ratifying the contract, we just saw the contract, I'm bringing it to the public's attention, because many people have reached out to me in regards to being surprised that this was not transparent and this was not brought to the public. My concern is that it seems that this position was not even in our budget. So it's not even in our budget in regards to paying Dr. Smith. So that was a concern of mine. And the other concern too, is that when we're looking at any personnel hiring, usually the superintendent brings it first to the Board. And you just brought up the idea of having it, and then that was it. Nothing was reported out to the public that you were interested in pursuing. Nothing was reported out in regards to how this position was gonna fit into our district. What were the reasons? I know there's a need, I hear what you're saying, there's a need, but the lack of protocol, procedure, and transparency was not evident here in this position. And that's very concerning as a public official and as serving our community and being responsible fiscally for our budget. This is over $255,000 that usually is not authorized without Board approval. So, and it's not even in the budget that we, the proposed budget that we already reviewed.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. I'll make a comment, then I'll kick it back over to Ms. Stewart. I am 100% in favor of this, and thank you for coming on board, and thank you, Ms. Acevedo, for all the work that you're doing. We do, if we want to have strong leadership and make change in this district, we do need to have leadership that has support, so we, because that's, that's, that's only going to help and support everything that we do. And you have mentioned, we do have declining enrollment, maybe it is a temporary thing, but right now, we need the support. So thank you for coming on board. We appreciate you being here. And I will say one thing to the transparency thing. This is part of housecleaning. This is part of getting things in order so we have more transparency. What you're saying, and I don't mean to direct it directly to you, but when I hear that this is a lack of transparency, the only reason we're talking about it is because there's a contract to talk about. Before, the practice was to not have contracts. That is less transparent than what we're doing now. It's important to have both the clarity, because there was a, there was an element of ambiguity before, and having that clarity, having that structure, and also having that protection for the workers, very important to have a good working environment. We talk all about, you know, having a good, positive, collaborative work environment, but these are the things that make people feel valued and to feel secure in their position so they can do the work that they do. It's very important, and it's the opposite of not transparent. I'm very supportive, and I will kick it over to Ms. Stewart.
Again, we keep saying that it wasn't brought to the public, and again, it is right now, and we can vote yes or no. And to say that we didn't know about this, though, really? We've known about this. The Brown Act does not allow us to talk about what we talk about in closed session, but our board members know what we talk about in closed session. And to say that this is the first time hearing about it, or anybody didn't have information on that, I just believe that's a lie. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, that's not a lie, and I will defend my place.
So you're saying you did not know about this. You did not know about this?
Dr. Sue, I will call on you when Ms. Stewart is done, and we weren't, we're not gonna have the...
Good. I have a conversation. You did not know about this.
I did not know about this contract. He started before we even agreed. We're having a discussion after the fact.
We're ratifying it like she said, but we did have a discussion before he...
Don't you think there's a liability for the district?
You're saying we didn't have a discussion?
My fellow colleagues, I would, I would like us to keep our comments directed at the item on the table and not each other. So do you have anything else you'd like to add to the discussion at this time?
Board member Stewart, what I am stating is that...
Please direct your comment to the item, not the colleague.
She asked me the question.
Please continue.
When we are looking at a contract and hiring an employee, usually the person starts after we approve the contract, not before.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. I will move on to Madam Clerk, Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. Superintendent, interim superintendent Acevedo. Where would Mr. Smith lie on our organizational chart?
Right underneath me.
And is that something that you have power to appoint or choose someone to come and help you?
Yes.
Perfect. So after you've done that, then I believe that this is under your purview as duties as our interim superintendent. So bringing it now to us to ratify this contract is well within your authority.
That is correct. You've hired me to manage the organization of the district, and you've asked me to make the best decisions possible to move this district forward. This is my recommendation to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
And I support it.
And thank you again, Ms. Acevedo. At this time, I would like to call for the vote.
I still have a comment, or are you not allowing me to have that comment?
Go for it.
And just a clarification to you, you do need a motion a second before roll call.
I just want to say again, thank you, Mrs. Acevedo, because again, as our legal counsel said, this position is deemed necessary by our superintendent. So to not vote for something that our leader thinks we need for our students and parents to me is appalling. So thank you so much, and again, I would support that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the deputy superintendent contract.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the deputy superintendent contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did we end discussions?
There is a motion on the floor. Do we need to...
I believe you'd called for the vote, at which point the motion was made a second, and a vote can take place.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Hesson?
No.
Mrs. Garza?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Crichfield?
Yes. Every time. Motion passes 3-1. The second major action item this evening is 12.2, approval of, welcome, Dr. Smith. Sorry.
Thank you very much, President Crichfield, members of the Board. Thank you.
The second major action item is item 12.2, approval of assistant superintendent employment contract. Government Code Section 54953-C3 requires that the following statement be read in open session and before action is taken on the employment agreement for the assistant superintendent. The Brown Act requires that the Board of Education make an oral summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or the compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive. Consistent with the requirements, the Board provides the following oral summary of salary and fringe benefits as outlined in the employment agreement for the assistant superintendent between the Bellflower Unified School District and Ms. Bonnie Carter. The term is effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. Salary is $219,536.24. Fringe benefits: participation in the STIRS retirement program. Participation in the same health and welfare benefits provided to the certificated management employees. $8,000 annual spending stipend for any travel and business-related expenses, including mileage. $1,250 annual stipend for a doctoral degree. The district may pay for the dues for relevant professional organizations of Ms. Carter's choice, subject to Board approval. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board? Yeah, I forgot. Ms. Stewart?
I just want to say thank you to Bonnie because I just think you're amazing, and I do think that we are lucky to have you here. I think you should be a superintendent one day, and I've told you that. And so I appreciate everything that you do for us, and I would love to have you back here on our contract, so I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Madam Clerk Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. I echo my colleagues' comments for Ms. Carter. I also wanted to say that this shift that we're now going into, having all our executive cabinet on contracts, helps avoid criticism criticizing previous board or board member decisions by emphasizing a forward-looking approach based on expert guidance. Having executive cabinet staff on AXA-approved contracts marks a significant evolution for the school district. Unlike the traditional practice, AXA-approved contracts provide clarity, stability, and professional standards for executive roles. This approach aligns with industry best practices, ensuring competitive compensation, performance, expectations, and accountability. It enhances recruitment and the retention of top talent by offering assurances and professional development opportunities. Moreover, AXA-approved contracts promote transparency and consistency in leadership transitions, safeguarding the district's continuity and effectiveness by embracing, sorry, these contracts. The district demonstrates its commitment to professionalism, governance, and equitable treatment of its executive team, ultimately benefiting the entire school community.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Dr. O'Hesson?
So I think Bonnie does a great job, Ms. Carter's doing a great job, she continues to do so. She's been with, I've known her longer than any board member here, since I've been here for nine years. So I have no question about her qualifications for this, for the contract. My question is, again, about process. Why are, she's been working under ed code all these years, it's never been an issue. Why all of a sudden is this now having to be a contract?
Is that a question for-
Ms. Acevedo.
Okay.
So moving forward, the process for any executive cabinet member would be to be on contract as a best practice recommendation.
How does that support the district?
As our general counsel has shared with you, there are benefits to the district, there are also benefits to the employee. So it helps both entities.
Since ed code provides those supports, how's it different from ed code?
So I believe the ed code you're referring to is the March 15th ed code. If you were to opt out of employing that particular individual, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm saying ed code also provides contractual and support for district as well as for the employee. So how is this different in regards to contract versus ed code?
I can't answer that question because I don't know what ed code you're referring to.
In general, the employment process, there are several ed codes, you're right, that fall under this area. But when you're looking at a support to the district, how does it differ from ed code?
Perhaps Mr. Zarega can help with that one?
Yeah, so in the contract, it allows for certain provisions that don't exist in the ed code. For example, if an individual was to be terminated without cause, they would be given a severance, which gives the employees certain securities in that position, which would allow them to continue to operate free of any, you know, consternation that they be released on an arbitrary March 15th date. In addition, it also allows that they would be entitled to, including the stipend, the professional development. Even the evaluations are laid out in there. So it basically takes things that are more nebulous within the ed code and puts them in detail in the contract. The reason that you would basically want your executive-level staff on contract is because those positions are generally at-will positions, which gives the board and the superintendent a lot more flexibility and ultimate authority over those positions. And if a change needs to be made, that organizational shift can occur very quickly. Whereas with the ed code, it does take a period of time to be able to affect those changes. So this is something that is generally seen as best practices, even within municipal government. For example, even within police departments. Anyone who's captain, deputy chief, or chief are on contract. They are outside the union, they're not represented by the union. So therefore, they negotiate their individual contracts with the cities, thus allowing the cities to be able to make those changes should they be needed. In terms of details, the contract lays out the provisions. There's a lot of provisions in there that are not found in the ed code, which again, as interim superintendent Acevedo stated, provides not only protection to the district, but also to the employee as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zarega. Dr. Stewart, come back after you go for another round. Ms. Stewart?
Again, I just want to thank you guys for having contracts. I mean, our CSA workers, our teachers, everyone pretty much has a contract. So to think that our district executives should not sign a contract, I don't understand that. So I thank you for cleaning this up and bringing these contracts, and I am so excited to have Bonnie back if we vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Vice President Stewart, Madam Clerk Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. I'm not understanding exactly why you don't want our executive cabinet on contracts. Could you explain that to me, please?
It sounds like ed code is more protection for the employee.
The ed code is so nebulous. It has, it's so wide-ranging. It doesn't necessarily offer very many benefits to our-
Colleagues, respectfully, let's guide our comments to the item and not each other.
Sorry. Ed code is very nebulous.
So if you don't want any discussion to the person on the diocese, then do not address that person.
Dr. O'Hesson, did you have a comment? Well, I will throw in my own. Bonnie, you're amazing. Thank you for being here. I enjoy recognitions even more knowing that you're doing them because you do such a great job on those and everything that you do. I've mentioned to Lisa before, but you're my canary sometimes where I don't, I don't know how bad things are getting or good, and I just have to look at you, and as long as you're cool, I'm cool. You're like the flight attendant. I'm like, alright, they're not panicking, we're all good. So thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I'm very supportive of this. Ms. Stewart?
President Crichfield, in all due respect, I do agree with my colleagues. This is the time to have discussions amongst our colleagues. We're discussing an item, and I understand talking to the item, and I understand us being respectful of each other, letting each other talk, and I know we're passionate about this. But I do think they should be able to engage in a conversation because it may help one of the others to maybe think differently. That's how it goes with discussions. So in all due respect, I would ask that they're allowed to have a discussion about the items on our agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. And let me be, let me be very clear, I'm not opposed to discussion. But if it becomes a back-and-forth between you two and we're not a part of the discussion, it should be a board discussion. So by all means, have the discussion, but let's keep it productive and let's keep it respectful, please.
I've been respectful, and you keep cutting me off. But if, if Ms. Garza has a question for me, and I respond, and you, and you stop me, that's not having an open discussion. So that's not supporting open discussion. You can't talk from both sides of your mouth.
Do you have anything else to add to this item? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Hesson?
I approve of the contract, but not the process.
Mrs. Garza?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
So, yes, yeah, point of order. What was the vote?
So it's either yes or no on the vote or abstain. So if board member could please provide a yes, no, or abstain.
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Me now?
Yes.
Mr. Crichfield?
Yes. Congratulations, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the crowd you'd like to recognize?
Not at this time, but thanks for the offer.
At this time, the board will take a 10-minute recess, and we will be reconvening in open session approximately 8:45. Thank you. Well, now we convene in open session at 8:42 PM. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items to withhold from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none.
Yes, I have my light on if you're willing to accept it.
Dr. O'Hesson?
13.23, adoption of the budget.
13 point, what'd you say, 23? Any other items, items to withhold this evening? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold items 13.23?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Hesson?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. All right, the item withheld from the consent agenda would be item 13.23. Our budget. Questions from the board? Dr. O'Hesson?
Yes. So since we're adopting a budget and we've just approved the contract, how does that work? This is a question for Ms. Holguen. Is that going to be added to the budget? Because once we approve it, can items be added and costs be added? Or once we approve it, that's it?
Didn't realize that. It would be done through a budget transfer for the department choosing that position, so it would be a budget transfer.
A budget transfer from our general fund?
Correct.
Okay. So once we approve it, that will be added at a later date, and we approve it at a later time?
There would be, have to be a personnel action form to approve that position and putting through, and then there would be an item in the budget to approve that position and put it in the position, in the, in the budget.
I see. Thank you for clarifying. No further questions.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Vice President Stewart?
Ms. Holguen, is there also a budget for all of the positions that we don't have in place right now? And how would we do that? Would we have a budget transfer for all of the things we've allocated and we don't have in place?
Yeah, those positions would be in the budget as vacant right now, and then once they would be filled, then that amount that is allocated for that position would serve that position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any at all? All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to approve item 13.23 on the floor. Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Hesson?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. Motion passes. Now we will move on to board communication. It's time for the Board of Education members to communicate and report out. We will start with Dr. O'Hesson.
Thank you. I was asked to read a personal statement for Board Member Armstrong, since she's not here. Good evening, Bellflower family, families of concerned citizens, teachers, and district staff. I hope all is well with you. I asked Member Dr. Sue to read the statement on my behalf due to not, due to my not being allowed to participate virtually tonight. After the board meeting on June 13th, I informed interim superintendent that I would like to participate in the next meeting via Zoom or phone call. Originally, the 20th was not a meeting date, and I was scheduled to be out of town. However, I still want to participate. I was informed a few hours ago that I was unable to participate due to the Brown Act teleconversing rules. As you know, as some of you know, as some of you may know, excuse me, I was allowed to participate via phone in previous meetings without incident. The interim superintendent reached out to counsel on Tuesday, but it was too late to follow through with the necessary steps such as giving notice and posting the agenda, et cetera. Should you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. Have a productive meeting and do what is best for our students. Regards, Renita Armstrong. So now I proceed with my board report. As you well know, I've always been talking about having a cell phone or removing cell phones from the classroom, and now LA Unified has moved forward and done so. So I think it's important for our district to look at that in regards to supporting our students' learning and creating a higher performance in the classroom and supporting our teachers, who've also been requesting the same information. In addition, I wanted to share that I am in support of Dr. Smith. What I was objecting to was the process and the transparency, which I feel was lacking. And I've always supported Ms. Carter, so that's not the issue. The other thing I wanted to mention is that when we're looking at chronic absenteeism, it's important to understand that we need to support our parents in making sure their kids come. It supports our ADA and hopefully will reduce our declining enrollment if students start coming to class. So I really encourage staff to start looking into the process of what we can do to support parents and students in attending. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that I would like for our ad hoc committee in regards to supporting special ed and students with disabilities to meet again soon so that we keep the momentum going and provide some support as we're moving forward before the academic school year so that teachers and students and parents will have better support for the upcoming academic year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Madam Clerk Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. I just want to say thank you to everyone in the school, in our school district. You know, executive staff, our classifieds, our certificated personnel. We have finished out a 2024, 20, 2023, 2024 school year. It was a great success, seeing all the pictures and being at the graduations. It's so nice to see it, you know, come to fruition, what we have invested in for so many years. I'm very confident that our students will do well in their, you know, next part of their journey. Now, I also want to say that there, if, I can please request the SB 2449 to be included in our Friday memo, please? Because it seems like we need a little bit more clarification as to how board members can be part of our meeting online. It was not denied. It is a, really a question of process. And so I think we all need that, myself included. So if we can have that, please, included this Friday in our memo, that I think it would help us. Going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Vice President Stewart?
Good evening. I have a really long board report, but theirs was short, so it makes up for more time for me. Okay, so in the last two weeks, I have met with BTA President Carrie McDaniels on May 30th. I've checked in with one of our local youth football leagues on May 31st. If you haven't checked out this league, please do so. It's the Bellflower Buccaneers Youth Football League, and they're helping so many children in our community. And I just really appreciate the coaches and their staff for all their hard work and dedication to our families. I stopped by their practice that night, and I just had a really good conversation, and they had a lot of kids there, so it was pretty awesome. On June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, I attended all three graduation ceremonies. All three ceremonies were just fabulous, and I am so proud of our 2024 graduates, so congratulations to them. On June 8th, I attended a women's empowerment tea at Progress Park in Paramount. Again, Paramount has an all-women city council that I respect and admire, and I'm so inspired by this event. This is my second year going, and I'm just very thankful that I was able to attend. On June 10th, I met with Mrs. Acevedo and President Crichfield. On June 11th, I met with them again, as well as our business services representatives, to review the budget and to learn more. That's something that I really want to focus on, is learning more about the budget. So I'm thankful that they were able to sit down and to answer some of our questions. On June 16th, it was Father's Day, so I hope President Crichfield and all of the fathers had an amazing day with their kids. And on Tuesday, I attended the personnel- And on Tuesday, I attended the Personnel Commission. I look forward to attending more of these meetings and learning more about the way that we operate. I also attended the Cal Apps meeting that day. We had two students present their experiences at the Skills USA competitions and how these programs have changed their lives and inspired them to pursue careers in the subjects that they love. Also, Paul Hudak from Growing Together Education gave a presentation on the freight farms and the new agricultural classes being offered. It was just really cool, and I would love to have him maybe come and present to our entire board whenever we can fit him in. I know we have a lot going on, but it was really awesome. I even got a little bit of butter lettuce for my rabbit, and Mochi definitely approved. Thank you again to Ms. Whitney and all of her staff. They do great things months and months, so I really appreciate them. Yesterday, we celebrated Juneteenth, and I hope that everyone had a great day off and celebrating and understanding the meaning of this holiday. Lastly, I would take a little bit, I would like to take a little bit of time in my board report to just speak a little bit about a few random questions I've had, concerns in the years to come, and kind of my vision. I'll be honest, the first time I was ever asked what my vision was, was when I met with Mrs. Azavejo the first time. Nobody has ever asked me that in the year and a half I've been on this board, so I just kind of wanted to tell everyone what I think. I think the most important factor in our district's continuing to grow is better leadership. Leadership is everything. It starts from the top down, and this district was and is still ready for change. We need good administrators who communicate and collaborate, and we need our teachers and our CSCA workers to work together to be good leaders for our students and families. My vision for our employees is that character matters. We're hardworking. We embrace problem-solving. We're solution-oriented. We are honest, collaborative, transparent, and that we as a district and admin can explain our whys to our educational partners. If we can do something, let's work together to do it. If we cannot do something, let's explain why, and I think that goes a long way with our transparency and what people think about our district. I've spoken to our interim superintendent on many occasions, and I will not speak for her, but I do know and I believe that character matters to her as well. I want us to hire great people in positions where we need to grow. I want us to collaborate and support our employees. I want us to have tough discussions, but with honesty and humanity behind them. I want us to communicate and find out how we can do better, and we're always learning and growing, and I expect that we continue to grow throughout my years here on this board. What I do love about our interim superintendent is that we are finally collaborating as a board and a district. We're asking for information, and we're getting responses to our questions. Our meetings have been shorter, and I finally feel like we have a vision or we're moving towards a vision with a strong leader who understands our district, and we're making progress, finally. I know it seems like there's little change at times, but many changes are happening. Many projects are being worked on right now, and things are going really, really great, in my opinion. I finally feel like our board is working together, better with our district, and I think it's going to show in time, and I hope that you guys will be patient. So kudos to Mrs. Azavejo and the changes that she is implementing. Just some of the things that I want to talk about. AP is being discussed at the middle schools. I brought that up in the LCAP meeting. That was not my idea. That was Mrs. Azavejo's idea. I just talk and I bring some of the things up in my board reports that we talk about together. Same with the K-8 dual immersion. That was her idea. There's a lot of ideas that we may take credit for that she is doing, and she's a very humble person, so she's not going to tell you, but I will. Our dual program is something that I think we can focus on even more and can be a huge positive for our district. Paramount is just starting dual immersion this year. We have had this in our district for 15 years. We just need leadership to make these programs happen and to get it out to the public and bring kids to our district. A few improvements I would like to see. We go over our district budget numerous times a year. We have unaudited. We have first interims. We have all of these things. And I believe our school sites should review their budget with their entire staff and collaborate as well, not just in school site council. Maybe when the district has interims and all of our meetings on the budget, maybe our site should too so that they can empower their staff to understand such an important aspect in their site funding. They can do a 30-minute or less slideshow. They could work together, but I do believe that we should all be working with our partners, especially our teachers and our administrators, when reviewing this. Teaching at a middle school that just transformed into a block schedule, one thing, a negative for me, and I have talked to Mrs. Azavejo, so she's going to know what I'm talking about, is I do believe that it's tragic that our middle schools are not required to take eight periods a day. They should be taking eight periods a day, taking electives, and not getting out at 1:45 or 2:00 PM. This is literally the age where anyone should be let out before those kids. And the whole intent of block was to build intervention and enrichment into the class with new electives, new CTE courses, new things to get our kids excited. So to hear that we only take six or seven periods, I just don't agree with that. I think we're failing our middle school students if we're doing this, and I believe this should be changed immediately. It has to change. So if it's something that we cannot do this year, it needs to be done in the future. And then lastly, I would like to ask for staff to maybe get back to us and to look into doing a forensic audit of our business services and our HR. I think these audits are very important. I'd like to know maybe the costs. I know they take three or four months. They take a long time. But to really make change, we need to learn from our past. We've been doing our sped ad hoc, and we're learning from the past of our FIGMAT reports. I think that we would do a service to ourselves by looking at our other departments and looking at where we can do better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. I will go to my board report, but before I do that, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield, for allowing me to come back and add one more thing to my comments. As I was driving here for our board meeting, I did see that Bellflower Boulevard is closed off, which means that they are now in full swing for their festivities for the summer. Could we possibly think about promoting our district, our programs, our pathways during that time? Because every time I ask some, you know, parents, random parents, I know some parents are going to say I'm crazy, at the grocery store, "Do you know of our programs?" They all tell me no. They don't know about dual immersion being a TK program. So maybe perhaps we can look into starting off and kicking off our campaign during that time? Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk Garza. For my board report, I'll keep it pretty short. Graduations were amazing. Thank you to all the staff that made that happen. It was, it was truly awesome, and the pictures and the videos that were captured, they did a terrific job, Hugo and the whole team. I was very happy with that. Oh, your cell phone going off? It was great, and I don't, it's definitely those events that make you remember what we all do this for and put in all the work. This past week, I met with PTA District President Linda Morgan. That was great, great collaborative, and learned so much. I think PTA got a couple shout-outs tonight, actually threw out, so you're doing a good job. And I also did attend the Personnel Commission meeting earlier this week. And, you know, I want to address something. There, there are things throughout the evening where we all, I think we agree on certain things, but it's about process and the transparency of things. There are, I could think of three or four just tonight where we would all agree on more transparency and the situation is better, but it seems that we have a difference of what that would actually look like. For example, the communication between us and, say, personnel can get better. We can, we can improve that relationship through just having better communication because what we found out is that there was just miscommunications a lot of the time. And same thing with the contracts. More communication means more transparency, means you're going to have these discussions. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of my colleagues for being willing to have these discussions because this is, addressing these problems and being proactive isn't an easy choice, but it's the right choice. So by bringing these things up and having these discussions, yeah, it's not always going to be pretty, but it's necessary. If we want change, we're going to have to have these types of discussions. And I applaud staff for putting in the work to make sure that we are, we have all the information, especially ahead of the board meeting, to have these discussions in a productive way. And I thank you to all my colleagues for all the work that you do to have these. It's very important. And I would also say with the remote meeting, it's very important that we don't always lean on, "Well, this is the way we've always done it." I don't like that answer, and I don't think any of us should. There is right and there is wrong, and we need to follow Brown Act, and we need to do things the right way. And just because somebody, you know, didn't do it before doesn't mean that we have to keep doing it that way. We are doing a great job as a district, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Azavejo again and echo my, I'm not going to do it as good as she did, but echo those sentiments of, "You're doing a great job, and we're doing the hard work, and, you know, it's not all about..." We're going to see the fruits of all this labor throughout the year, and it's going to be great. And we have a lot more of these discussions to have as we are proactive, and there's a lot of results to come. So I'm very excited for the future. Some of these meetings aren't always going to be very fun, but they're necessary. And I thank my colleagues and staff for being willing to have these so we can make progress for our students. So thank you. We will not be going back into closed session, so this meeting, where am I at? Oh, information items. Never mind, you weren't out of here so easy. Does the board have any questions regarding the information items this evening?
No, President Crichfield.
No? Hearing none. At this, if there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned at 9:03 PM until the regularly scheduled board meeting to be held on Thursday, July 11th, 2024. Thank you all, and have a great night.